...years ago when we sat down and talked about it, just from the potential of perhaps taking over that thing. Question that I have is part of the point on that is the, what we saw a while ago, what the Act of Life Extension Service, all the things that they've done. And Wilson County has been commended over and over for our growth in the 4-H group within this county. We have one of the top groups in the state. And, well, I don't want to do anything to change that if it's something the county can do in their hands, but I think that makes a big difference potentially in the lives of the young folks as they come up.
The county government goes, it's not just for the youth. I'm looking at it as something for the elderly as well. It's built on wheels and since it's closed, then with a lot of people that were going there and being raised, and it's places that can be visited. Right now, they got the needed place for these older adults also. You got the youth involved. Like Commissioner Wally said, we have a lot of our 4-H group in the state of Texas. And we need to do something for this youth, keep the youth off the street, in the back and having work. And I know the 4-H program, but they said they're describing for more of the places they're looking for things. It's not just about showing how. They got artillery, they got gun, gun shoots out there. They got everything, all kinds of stuff cooking. Well, there's a lot of things out there that can be done. Also, the extension needed, also the duty for their field of training for the farmers and ranchers that's out there. Helping keep your license. There's a lot of things this can be used for other than just bills on wheels and the stock show. I can see that. I know Commissioner Wally worried about utilities. We worry usually for that. There's no $6,000 each. I didn't know that was going on. You know, you worry about maintenance or you worry about janitorial service. Anybody who rents will pay for the janitorial service. It wouldn't be on the county. Anybody.
Do you have a number that we can look at?
Sure, I can get a number.
Okay, here's one thing on the numbers is it's gonna be all pretty different.
But it's not, it's the same.
It's gonna be all pretty different because one thing, the county's not gonna be into a beer license. I, I would like to see that. With that going away, the cooler does not have to be owned to keep what's excess beer that's there. It can be shut down, so that's gonna be an expense. So the, the utility bills will be different carrying forwards from what they are right now.
On the mills and buildings, it's gonna be by place out of the woodwork.
Yes.
Okay, and who's gonna pay for all that?
It's the, the county. It is gonna be on ours.
Do you have any numbers?
Okay, they're not gonna have a, they're not gonna have a cooler going. That's gonna be a big deal. Most of what they're gonna do, there's gonna be some preparation there, and they're gonna be coming in, they're gonna be sitting down and getting their meals.
I thought they had to have coolers.
What's that?
I thought they had to have coolers.
They didn't have coolers. I mean, you got, we do like, they were bringing the mills down, they were coming from community council of SNE.
I mean, that's why, that's why before we made the decision, we would like to see all the total number. Let's see what it's gonna cost the county.
We can have it in the sit-down.
Sit-down?
Now the detail business line, you know, talking about bills on wheels and citizens and that. We haven't done anything. I, I'm a first supporter. I, I was a buyer in the virgin, I'm a grand, my kids, children, animals. I'm not against this. I just wanna make sure that when we do this, we make the right decision and not, not get this cash out if we continue having to put our order of tax dollars in for something over seven.
What we probably should do is have committees that will take a look at the current expenses, as many as we can get.
Well, there was, there was a report sent out by Dawn, and I know you got it and I got it.
I got it. But if I did, I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it either.
No, just to take out of the box, I contacted the local municipal business and asked him if the surface that's on the road, would he be interested in buying it. He said yeah, but I didn't have the information, his order passes and all. And he continued, but he utilized for his purpose. I don't think that's gonna be on the tape. If this, this doesn't go through with this, I do not believe that that's gonna be an option whatsoever in private entity.
Well, if I may, what we, what we need to do, I don't disagree with you, what we need to do is, is to take a look at this thing. It's gonna be some cost to the county, I'm sure. But, but we can go through and, and look at what, you know, put together a plan so as to as far as we can see as to what it is we want to do with this. I mean, we have some ideas. I know what we want to do with this. How does this affect the Act extension? Is there a chance they could relocate over there? And if they could relocate over there, and then you can cash out management there already. And then to look at what the expenses is in, and then look, you know, we're talking about the, because I recall when I met with Judge Quinney, that one of the liquor licenses and that big, uh, cooler were an expensive thing to take a look at. So take a look at, um, changes in what the utilities and all that would be. And then as much as you can speculate over the fact that, you know, it could be rented out, um, at a reasonable rate that would make it appealing to other folks. And you're not gonna be able to develop what I would call a full business, but you can develop one so that you're not blind going into it. I'd be favorable to that, and I can tell you that.
The sense is, you know, profit is a five oh one C, so I don't know if we have to look into that too.
I mean, if, if you think it's gonna make money, it will make money. I, I can assure you that. It's not a business proposition to make money. We're not in a business. To me, we're, we're here to help the citizens of this county. This be, to me, one part to help the citizens of this county.
I'm with you, but, but at the same time, we ought to have as much of a snapshot as we can put together that says, okay, here's how we're gonna be at. Um, and I think the judge is right with the fact that whoever this you talk to is interested in buying it. Although, the judge says that's something that's probably not gonna be on the tape. Indicates right there that it's perceived as, as buy. Nobody, no business man's gonna buy that thing, he's gonna lose money. So this is, this is a situation that I think is probably good for the county. And I agree with us. I think we just need to, um...
I mean, we got, we're gonna, it's not making a proposition to you. It's a service that we provide, here's your county. You know, we've got the election facility, it's not making no money, but it's a service that we provide to citizens of this county.
And I think this calls into it again. It'd be interesting to take a look, and there probably is some sort of study that you could have involved the 4-H and how they contribute to society in later years versus perhaps folks that didn't have that opportunity. And so, everything about it is good. I do agree that we ought to put together a little better snapshot.
Why did you all just come out about this? Well, then because of the Stock Show Committee not getting along with the Show Barn Committee. I mean, those are two things right there that, I believe in the past years, I mean, they can't get along and negotiate something good for the county. They're always looking for the county to come forward and take over. And I think those two committees can work out something on a deal where they can take over. Now, as a one, not as a two.
Have you talked to anybody about that?
I don't even know who's in the committee. I mean, I know those, because they've been going on for years and years. And that's the problem that they're always bringing up to the committees for. So the board can take over and they can resolve the problem. And if they can work it out, what it does, it costs the taxpayers money. Well, I think they ought to sit down, also like we're sitting down and discussing the future. So I don't see why they can't do that.
I don't think they sit down a few times over the past few years and not been able to work in the, do you have another topic comment? And I know you still don't think it's bad, and you still like to say something.
I'm, uh, Scott Banning. I'm Vice President of the Livestock Show Committee. And, um, I farm ranch and dairy in Precinct Two. So, goes without saying why I'm for it, but the question is, why should the county, why should the county take it over? And I apologize for being late, some of this has been, maybe has been said, but why should the county take it over? And I just have a couple of, couple of deals there. We have over four hundred and fifty participants in the stock show every year. And that's in a show barn that hasn't been improved in twenty years? Twenty years? We don't, nobody has, the, the, in this day and age, private entity can't take care of the, of trying to make updates. We don't have any money. So, in this day and age, things like stock show, I mean, a show barn, civic centers, um, things of that nature, they don't, they're not gonna make any money. But we hope that in the long, directly, they're not gonna make any money. But we hope in the long run, we do keep kids doing the right thing. And I believe that this is some of the right thing, where they learn a little bit about raising animals and shooting. Also, in the Rifle Club, there's, there's thirty-five to forty participants that are there about six months out of the year. That's very important to them. In a facility that hasn't been improved in, in many, many years and needs some improvements. That was my first point. My second point was the, it is called the Wilson County Show Barn. And it was, it was named that, I guess it was the early seventies, of people from all over the county that donated their time, money, and efforts into getting that, getting the, the stock show in one centralized place. And it was very important to those people, and it's very important to me that we keep that up and improve it to the best that we can. Thank you.
Folks that operate, the two groups that are, that are involved, um, I don't think they're pulling money out of their pockets to make anything. Um, is it something that we're gonna make money on? Commissioner Fox pointed that out. Is it something that we may be able to, to manage effectively? And I think, I think that's a possibility. But I still think, I think everyone will figure, I mean, it's not, we're not gonna come back and say this is gonna be a big moneymaker, because I don't think, I don't think that that's the case. But I think we might come back and fill in the blanks a little better than we have.
I have papers on the note of the day.
What's that?
I have papers on the note of the day.
Yes.
I think the legal team is pretty, they can assume a private debt, so, for now, move forward and, whatever, what's that? County can't just...
We're not gonna assume their debt, we're gonna purchase the property.
You, you...
They owe you...
You assumed the debt.
What's that?
You said, you were gonna assume the...
Well, okay, okay, we're gonna purchase the property from what their debt is. And we were talking a while ago about, okay, the, the financing or what it's gonna do, okay? We've got the, the fund balance, and we maybe have surplus at the end of the year. That will more than probably take care of what is the purchase price is gonna be.
Some level of...
Yes. It's, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna assume the number. That's gonna be up to them to take the purchase price we have and pay our fair amount.
Just like the, the, Commissioner Fox, that should act about how it should be used. We're talking about the access that you put there, the bill on wheels. I don't have much office space in there. But if you have some type of business plan of where you can put things, or what it's gonna be used for, we're just gonna be running circles, you know? It's not gonna be, you have to allocate wherever you pay for it. You feel that's some kind of, if you don't use it for your time, it's gonna go back. If someone needs to replace it, there's too much, too much to handle right now. First, the next decision.
And the question that one of our managers would be gathered in our county, how many of you want to vote for those organizations?
Okay, who wants to step up? I'll make the most of it, we go ahead and purchase it. A little bar, you know, it's a purchase, it's a financial one. Two hundred sixty, uh, two hundred sixty-one thousand, essentially one dollar a pound a state.
I want a second, but, um, I think we need to step back and take a look. I'm aware of where you're at. And I believe anything that comes down the flight is gonna have the, the not included in it. But I think we ought to step back, take a snapshot, and then bring it back for our next commission course, assuming we can put together something.
We all think the...
I think that's probably the proof, the thing to do.
I mean, what, what are you gonna give, because of course, I...
Well, I, I think an operating plan of sorts to, you know, to, to find out basically what the current operating expenses are, what the current operating income is, um, and then to take a look at that. Um, and to sort of analyze whether, one, our expenses, we know they won't, won't be quite as high with those, uh, the cooler and so forth, we talked about electric units and so forth, to look at those expenses. To look at income and ask ourselves, will we be able to generate the same sort of income? We might be able to generate more income, perhaps, to identify if in fact we would like to move the Act Extension Service over there. What else could be associated with that? And, and what could be gained by that? Pretty simple questions like that. You know, I know it's not gonna be necessarily a moneymaker. It might be a, a unusual situation to have, some things that could come in. And, okay, I'll say honestly, it's starting to look pretty bad for me not to be in favor of it, just because of what it does to the community of this county.
Okay, you draw your motion about the point of committee to, to put together a plan.
I believe so.
So that is gonna die to light in a second.
We'll come back, we're gonna do the next agenda.
Do you wanna get the committee from work? I'm gonna appoint the committee right now. You, and you, and you. Okay, Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Wally, Tom Gil, and County Auditors.
Okay. I'll hear you guys.
And I understand, you know, we need to find a piece of the property, you know, not piece of property, but that budget cost, the additional cost, what they're gonna, you have to... And this could be the first, why not, purchase process, which would be additional.
It, it, it's part of our ability, you know, I, I used to be in the business and I used to buy operations, and when I went into buying, I took a look for what their expenses were, what it was with my expertise, and that's it. What it was I could do with, and drew conclusions, whether or not I could make money. And then I thought, and I think all these folks have asked for, and what the commissioners have asked for, is just a better fit. Um, again, I'm in favor of it, but I think we ought to just step back and recommend it, and then come back. And the numbers are gonna have to be really bad for me not to be in favor of when we need again. Okay, I'm, I'm upfront, I mean, I'm almost ready to say it right now, but I think there's, there's too much that this is...
Just move right on. There, Commissioner Paul's motion down to the mic in a second. Okay, committee is appointed, by a plan. And the committee is President Paul, Commissioner Wally, Tom Gil. Okay? Is there anything else? We're gonna be looking for that law. We did item number fifteen, the Texas County District, Curtis Fowler, Constable, uh, three hundred and sixty-three. Discuss the take after, I'll send the chair's and constable's beefs for 2019.
Good morning, Curtis Fowler, Constable, three hundred and sixty-three, Washington County. What I'm asking for is a request for consideration to change to the chair's and constable's beefs for 2019. I'm not sure how long the beefs have existed, uh, much less when they were last, when they moved into, but I know at the previous meeting, I heard the judge made a statement that they, they've been what they are currently for some period of time. So, I think it's worthy of looking at a couple of the items that, well, one item that occurs quite frequently, and one other that doesn't occur frequently at all, but we're a little bit behind on one item as compared to other counties in the state. The first one, uh, and the more important one in my opinion, is a writ of possession for an execution, for a, for an eviction. Landlords typically, when they evict somebody, they go through an eviction process. First is a three-day notice of, of eviction. They, they handle that part of the process themselves, or they hire somebody to do it for them, other than a loan person. When a, three-day notice means the tenant will move out of a property that they've rented within three days. If they don't, then the next step that the landlord can take is a, a writ of, a writ of eviction. The writ of eviction notice just means that, that's a paper, a civil process paper that a constable or a sheriff's deputy has been served on that renter, the tenant. And once served, it provides him that he has so many days to be out, uh, into a period court, actually to a period court. He goes to court and gives an opportunity to explain his side of the situation versus the landlord's side of the situation. And if the, depending on the decision of the judge, if the judge rules the paper of the tenant, then the tenant is sustained. If the judge rules it, federal landlord, the tenant is given a five-day notice to, to vacate the premises. If after that five days, the tenant has not vacated the premises, now you're writ of possession for that eviction occurs, will take place. And that writ of, uh, possession, uh, is served by a deputy or a constable going out and posting a warning notice on the tenant's door that states he has so many days to be out by a certain time on, maybe typically five days to be out, and by ten AM on whatever that fifth day is. If the tenant is not out, then the sheriff, deputy, or the constable who is performing this, this execution has to move the tenant out physically. And the land, it's the landlord's responsibility at that time to have a staff there, a crew of people there, we call it a cleanup crew, so that they can clean out and, and remove all the possessions of that tenant out to the street. This is a legal step, and it's a legal method of eviction, if I'm right. The length of time, typically, in my experience, uh, since two thousand, January first of two thousand seventeen, my experience, most, most of these writs of possession are gonna take over two hours, uh, simply because the landlord is never prepared with a move-out room. They might have one or two people there that are gonna move a three-bedroom, all the possessions of the, of the vacant tenant, and out of a three-bedroom, two bath, one kitchen, one den, one living room, home, be it a mobile home or a, a regular home. So, that ties up officer's time, considers, and he can't leave because the execution, the, the writ is not considered executed until such time as all the possessions of the tenant have been moved out to the street. And at that time, then you can turn it over to the landlord, and they can change the locks, if the lock is locked, and everybody can leave at that point. And also at that point, they can begin cleaning it up if they so desire. But they never have enough of a cleanup crew to allow you to get in and out in an hour to two hours. Constable Tally and myself have been on at least one, at least one, maybe two, where we were there for hours or more. It's just, sometimes you have to add two officers there, because if you're the, the family that's lived there before, there may be, may have been disturbances between them in the past, uh, they're made of the breads, they're gonna show up on the day of move-out, you're not gonna move out, you're not gonna take much, blah, blah, blah. So, anyway, sometimes there's two, two officers required for safety purposes. So what I'm requesting is that we change that possible. Currently, there's, there's a two hundred dollar fee that's paid to the court for that writ of possession, uh, to be created and executed. The, but there is nothing there to pay for an officer's time. Not that this money's one to the officer. That certainly is not gonna happen. The money goes to the county, both the county's general fund. But it helps cover that officer's time on the, on the job site. They're, they're being tied up, they can't go anywhere else unless it's an emergency sometime. So, uh, in your, in your handout here, it tells you that one of Wilson County's surrounding, one of Wilson County's surrounding counties, this is Waterloo, actually, charges thirty dollars a mark officer, if it's a sheriff's deputy, took seventy-five dollars a mark officer, if it's a constable. Uh, after the first, after the first hour, the first hour an officer's on scene is free, but after that, they begin charging. Two counties, uh, at Scotia and, uh, Bear County, charge fifty dollars per officer, per hour after the first two hours. So, there's two hours an officer's there, uh, there would be no charge, and after two hours, they begin charging fifty dollars an hour, hour per officer. Wilson County, we don't have, we don't charge anything, you're just simply there until the duration is over. So that's, that's the first change I would like to see. My recommendation was fifty dollars per hour, per officer after the first hour. Any questions for me? The second one is not near, is, is near, is, doesn't occur near as frequently as the first one, uh, order of sale. I had one, one of those situations since I took office and, uh, Deputy Hawkins from the Sheriff's Department, I might have had several of those. He gets quite a few more of those types of activities from the district clerk's office and so forth, than the constables have been receiving, but it still doesn't occur near as often as a writ of possession. On the order of sale, let's see, a year ago, when I first wanted to make, make recommendations to change this and, and got in on it, too late to do that for accomplishment. Uh, the documentation you have attached on the last sheet, the last, the third sheet of your documentation there, the last, is Wilson County, and for a writ of sale, or a writ of execution. I'm sorry, from the writ of possession, you'll see, I'm sorry, writ of sale, we charge for the writ of sale, I don't know why that says in May there, uh, we charge us two hundred dollars, I think, is the court cost for the papers, two hundred dollars, but there is no fee to collect, uh, or there is a two percent fee. Where this says there is no fee, there is in fact a two percent fee. So if you look at an example that I put there, on a sale of, of order of sale for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar property, Wilson County would make twenty-five hundred dollars in commission, okay? Now again, that commission doesn't go to the constable, doesn't go to the deputy that served the paper that was there. It simply goes into the general fund to help cover some of the costs. And there's a lot of costs, there's a lot of, a lot of, of work and effort on the part of the constable, the sheriff's deputy, to put a sale order together. There's a lot of work, a lot of time invested in that. The surrounding, some of the surrounding counties, surrounding, and when I say surrounding, I'm talking about contiguous to Wilson County, charge what's more common, and that is, uh, on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar order of sale, they're gonna charge ten, ten percent of the first ten thousand dollars, five percent of the next fifteen thousand, and then a final amount, two and a half percent. So in the example of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar order of sale... So in the example of the hundred twenty-five thousand dollar order of sale, uh, of a property, Wilson County would collect twenty-five hundred dollars in commission. These other counties would hit forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. And there are ten percent on the first ten thousand, five percent on the next fifteen thousand, and two and a half percent of the remaining balance appears to be quite common, uh, throughout the state of Texas and most...